All right, good evening, and we will call the meeting to order. If you will please join me with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Okay, I know you have your signs, but just a reminder that we need to be using the microphones. Points of pride, because of the rescheduled meeting tonight, we will not be having a points of pride, the people that were going to present are not able to be here tonight, so. That puts us down to approval of the manifest.
I certify that the manifests listed below totaling $3,601,153.25 have been reviewed by me and found to be proper charges against Kentucky Valley School District for goods and/or services received and have been properly processed prior to the submission to the school board.
Move to approve the manifest? We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public comment, do we have anyone in the public that wishes to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go down to reports. All right, we have our attorney with us tonight. Welcome Dean, and we're going to talk a little bit about open enrollment.
Thank you, Ann. That may have been the most important part of the presentation, activating the slots. Oh, that's, yeah, it's just not showing because I haven't activated it yet. There we go, problem solved. This is a case of PowerPointalism. So, good evening, I think I know just about everybody on the board here, but in case we've missed, my name is Dean Eckert, I'm with the firm of Wadley, Star &amp; Peters. I'm here tonight to talk with you generally about open enrollment, and then if we move into areas that require legal advice, we can, at the pleasure of the board or the chair recess, to answer any specific legal questions. So, if we were to talk a little bit about open enrollment and talk first about what it is we desire to achieve here this evening, I have to begin with a little bit of a warning, and the warning is that open enrollment is a hot topic right now, and not just a hot topic among school boards throughout the state of New Hampshire, but also at the legislature. So, anything that I present tonight, of course, is the subject to any number of changes with both bills held over from the prior session, or bills that may be actually pending before the legislature at this point. I want to begin a little bit by defining some terms, you know, if you play a board game, you can either just open the game and pop open the, wait, nobody plays board games anymore. There used to be something called a board game, where you would open up a box and you would unfold this cardboard thing and you could begin to play, or you could flip over the lid and actually read the rules that come with the game. But I want to begin first by definitions and hand, you know, honestly, if your screen was actually not this dark, it would be super helpful. I think I just solved it. So I want to begin by talking a little bit about definition and pedigree when it comes to open enrollment. First definition, there are three terms that are interchangeable. Now, we didn't know they were interchangeable until the Supreme Court declared that they were interchangeable, and those are open enrollment public school, open enrollment school, and open enrollment program. And the definition in the statute, which is, if you love to read statutes, it's RSA 194D is the chapter, the definition of an open enrollment public school, school, or open enrollment program is set up there on the screen above. Basically, it is a school which does something in addition, in this definition, to what it does with it serving its residents within its attendance area or district, it is a district which chooses to accept pupils from other attendance areas, either from within its district and from outside its district. Now, that's sort of interesting, because there have been some legislative changes recently that have mooted out the first part, from other attendance areas within your district, but certainly it remains still quite a matter of interest when a school district says, "We would like to educate people from outside our district." Let's move to pedigree. This statute is really interesting, because one evening in legislative work session, the decision was made to remove the concept of open enrollment from the charter school statute, and they were conjoined twins at the time, and we can tell that the surgery was only partially successful in separating them, because the charter school statute still has a definition of open enrollment school in it that people forgot to pull out when they separated the concept of open enrollment school from charter schools. Originally, it was called, the statute was 194B, it still exists today, but at the time it was called chartered and open enrollment public schools. The artifact that I refer to then is that definition that you still find in the charter school statute. I think it's also important, before we launch into sort of the detail of open enrollment schools, how you make them, how they operate, how they function, the options and choices you have with regard to open enrollment, both with regard to receiving and, if you will, sending, is to understand that there are a lot of other forms right now in New Hampshire of non-resident portability, the majority of which have emerged in the past five to 10 years. The first one is a change in best interest reassignment. Now, there had always been a standard in the law where you could go to a superintendent as parent and demonstrate to the superintendent that it was in the best interests of your child that they attend school in another school district or in another school. Now, recently, that statute was amended to say that when a parent comes into a district and says, "My child is going to one elementary school in this, in this district, but it is in their best interest to go somewhere else," the sole decision that the superintendent faces now under the law when that request is made is whether or not there's room in the other school, which is a change in the best interest statute. There's also, and has been for a long time, the concept of manifest education hardship. Now, that's really grown and emerged. It used to be that it existed for people who lived very close to the border of another school district and very far away from the school. And you can think of all these districts where people live on the fringe, and they could literally look out their window and see a school in another district, but they couldn't go. And so instead, they had to take a bus ride for an hour to go to another school, and manifest educational hardship first emerged to deal with that real pragmatic problem. But over the years, the statute has amended and broadened itself to now set up criteria where when a parent demonstrates any number of forms of hardship typically related to their child, there could be a change in assignment to another school district. In both of those cases, let's say it was CONVAL that granted those requests through the super or through the board, the district would pay the tuition but would not transport the child. Now, there's also, and has always been, the ability of a parent to apply for admission to a district and pay tuition. It actually happens, and still to this day happens in New Hampshire. There's also the ability to apply for admission with payment by the resident district, and so 193.3 was changed a number of years ago, seven or eight years ago, to say that a parent, any parent in New Hampshire, could go from their resident district, apply to another district, and the district in which that child resides could agree to pay tuition. And really, it was just purely arbitrary, the district could say, "Yes, I will," the district could say, "Nah, don't, not feeling it, don't feel like doing that." Typically, they say the latter. There's always been the capability to enter into tuition agreements where your residents go to another school district. We're going to find that actually open enrollment will probably destroy the mechanism of both the tuition agreement and the area agreement, because there's no longer a need for that if you have open enrollment. But historically, tuition agreements and area agreements have been useful mechanisms used when districts didn't have schools to send a child to a school in another district. Now, we also have EFAs, and EFAs allow people to not only declare themselves to be an EFA student, apply to take courses within your district, but they can also apply to take courses in a school that's not their resident school, so long as they're not taking more than 50% of their educational experience in that school, that's another way that a resident or non-resident could move between districts. So, within that context of six existing, seven existing mechanisms, we sort of moved to open enrollment. Oops, make it eight, I missed one more. If you go to a CTE program now, you can enroll in that district, the school that's adjoining or adjacent to the CTE program for the balance of your education as well. And so let's make it eight before we get to open enrollment. So, when we think about open enrollment, there's both the law and then urban mythology. So let's try to demythologize this a little bit, and let's make it specific to CONVAL. Let's talk about how you would create, first, let's talk about creating an open enrollment school. So let's say you as a board declare that we would like to make CONVAL High School an open enrollment school. How would you go about doing that? Well, the first thing is, there's only so much you as a board could do. You could recommend it, you could put it on the warrant, you could advocate for it, but it is the legislative body that actually adopts or votes to designate one or more of the schools as an open enrollment school. So, governing board puts it on the warrant, legislative body would vote on it. Now, this can be done school by school, or you could go wide open and say, "We want to declare the CONVAL School District to be an open enrollment school district." So, it's interesting, it could even be more precise and surgical than school by school, it could even be program by program. What do I mean by that? So let us say that you had a pilot program in your middle school in a language that's not taught anywhere else in the southwest of New Hampshire, or for that matter, even maybe the southwest of the US. But suffice it to say, you want to attract more students so you can really maintain the volume of the program that you want. You could say, "Our Mandarin program in the middle school is an open enrollment program, and if you're a child who wants to go to a middle school that teaches Mandarin, you can come to this school." And it could be that narrow in the focus of open enrollment. We often think that somehow it's like a big proposition, but it could be surgical as well. So how would CONVAL do it if we take the hypothetical of declaring CONVAL High School to be an open enrollment high school? Well, the first thing I think you would do is, before you even did that, you'd study two things, potential inflow and potential outflow, because whether we like it or not, the reality on the ground ever since the Supreme Court decided to appeal to Pittsfield is that every single district will, to some extent, potentially be impacted by the concept of open enrollment if they're adjacent to or geographically proximate to another district that has declared an open enrollment program. And the question is, do we want to be a one-way-out district, in other words, a pathway out where, for example, if you were a, let's say you were a district that had no high school, you would probably not have any reason to declare a high school to be open enrollment, you don't have one. So that would be pretty simple, but the minute you have a school and you have the potential to attract people, you want to study potential inflow. And the study questions as a board that you'd want to look at would be these. Well, what schools amongst our district would benefit from open enrollment? What would come of it? What would benefit the school? Number two, what would be the impact of designating, in this case, for example, we know that Francis Town has a pending withdrawal petition, would it be a wise move to designate that school to be an open enrollment school? Probably not, I mean, you'd leave that to the local decision-makers, but you would have to add the question of, well, if we declare our elementary schools to be open enrollment, would that have an adverse impact on a withdrawing school as well? That's another question that you would want to look at. What schools would be disadvantaged by an inflow? Are there certain schools that if we declared to be open enrollment, it actually could be detrimental, maybe they'd be beyond maximum capacity, right? And then, this is a really big question, what will the neighbors pay? That's not a single number, right? And the impact on CONVAL of collecting 80% of another district's average per pupil cost and having that be your revenue is going to be a question that differs what? Neighbor by neighbor, right? I can tell you right now one anecdotal story of a district not in this region that has a $24,000 average per pupil cost, but they're in an AREA where they only have to pay $17,000 per student. Their 80% outflow cost is greater than what they're currently paying under their AREA. It's financially detrimental to them to have students leave under open enrollment. And the problem right now with the statute is it doesn't talk about average per pupil cost based on the school to which that child goes, whether they're flowing out or flowing in. In other words, it isn't your average per high school pupil cost, or your average per pupil cost for middle school, or for elementary, it's just that singular number under the statute. So, you'd study that, and you'd also study potential outflow, which is something, whether you decide to do anything with open enrollment or not, if your neighbors are going to do anything with open enrollment, you would want to study potential outflow. What would you, CONVAL, pay for students who leave? Pretty quick math, right? But it's something you'd want to do, it won't take long to study. What's the impact of paying 80% of your average per pupil cost if pupils flow out? Obviously, it increases each year, right? And so that's a little bit of tricky math, you'd need a BA to help you with that, I think. You'd continue on and you'd ask the question, what schools and programs would be disadvantaged by an outflow? And why are we looking at that? I'll talk about that in a minute. You'll also ask a question, what's the net fiscal impact, pedagogical impact, educational impact on a district when it opens itself up to, let's say, unlimited open enrollment outflows? So you have to study the potential outcomes, a fiscal analysis, out of that you might recommend schools or school programs for open enrollment, you might recommend inflow limitations. The statute's pretty clear that you have the ability to determine your capacity, and it would make no sense for a district to just say, "Doors are open, doesn't matter how many people, if we get 10,000 students, we'll take them all," right? So you're able to set those inflow limits, and you're able to also set outflow limits. These would all be recommendations from the board if, and candidly, the only way to limit outflow is to, based on the Pittsfield decision, and this is a part where I'd respectfully argue that the court may not have fully analyzed the implications, because that wasn't their job, but right now, the only way a school district in New Hampshire can limit its flow of students out of the district after this decision is to become an open enrollment school district in some form, at least that Mandarin program in the middle school. And then with that, you can adopt your limitations on inflow and outflow. So mechanically, how would that work? Well, if you want to do something with open enrollment, you pretty much know this answer, you're SP2, you'd put an article on your official ballot. So this is a sample article. It's not the article you're going to adopt, but this is a sample article of how you would make the CONVAL High School an open enrollment high school. And that would have to be adjusted as well. This example is modeling after the Prospect-Mountain Joint Managed High School where they limited their outflow to zero. So technically, the statute says between zero and 100, so a mathematician will have to tell me whether zero is between itself or not, but it, statute says between zero and 100, right? Continuing right along, couple things to note, you can put forward a resolution that limits open enrollment to a specific program within your existing school, and notice that, and this is And notice that, and this is sort of a different concept than we see in most of public education, it says that open enrollment school districts or schools get to discriminate on the basis of needs, academic focus, and can pick specific programs such as actively targeting at-risk children, voc-ed pupils, math pupils, science, arts, history, or languages. But there's actually even more significant criteria that you can adopt. So, this statute actually says that you can adopt an open enrollment program that limits it to students who demonstrate aptitude, academic aptitude. So, let's say that you wanted to set, and I'm not saying CONVAL would want to do this, but the statute would actually let you say, "Oh, we only accept children who have this academic record or do this on an aptitude test." They're accepted, the rest are not. That's sort of a tell that open enrollment was originally supposed to be mated with the concept of charter schools, and when you pulled it apart and then said it's fully public, it now creates this odd situation where you can create schools that do discriminate on the basis of a child's ability, provided it's limited to or related to your academic goals. Now, I think that's just a result of the legislature not having really thought that through in terms of the impact of that, but it's in the statute, so I do need to make you aware of it. Now, when you adopt open enrollment of any kind, you are mandated by statute to limit both who comes in and who goes out. And as I said, that is a 0 to 100% gain in the statute. The procedure. So, the board schedules a public hearing on its article. Please bear in mind that the statute is once again vague and ambiguous as to whether the public hearing is mandated when it is going to be presented to the citizens at a deliberative session, but it's so poorly written that I have to advise you to hold a public hearing. Now, a public hearing is harmless, right? Because it educates the citizens of what's being proposed. And so, whenever there's a close call, you would do it 15 days, at least 15 days before it's to be voted on, no earlier than 30, it must be posted and published. At the deliberative session, please note that the limitations could be amended. I do not believe you could amend the designated school because the citizens were warned that what you were going to look at was open enrollment with regard to a specific school or program. So, citizens would make the decision whether they're going based on whether or not it's a topic that they had an interest in. So, a family with high school-age students might say, "Ah, you know what? Not interested in discussing an elementary school becoming open enrollment." And only to discover to their dismay later that it was amended to declare CONVAL High School at deliberative is now the open enrollment school, right? So, that would be a call of the moderator, but the limitations could definitely be amended. When does it become effective? It becomes effective July 1, following the action to adopt. Now, you have to carry a separate line item in your budget for your outflow and inflow, which is a little bit odd, because I've never seen a line item that had an expenditure and an inflow in the same line item, but that's for the DRA to figure that one out for us. You've always had line items with regard to outflow, outflowing tuition, and I believe even inflowing. The problem, I suppose, is this. How do you budget for this? How do you determine or project incoming revenue? And how would you ever project outgoing revenue? Because you're passing a budget in March that becomes effective July 1, and you had no real-world experience with it, right? So, there might be some wisdom to taking, shall we say, training steps first before you declare something to be 100%, because that comes with potentially open exposure, right? Huge inflow. Bear in mind that when you begin to talk about, for example, throwing an entire high school open to open enrollment, your success may be your undoing because now you're looking at classes that are tipping from your student-teacher ratios that you can maintain to student-teacher ratios that are requiring new teacher hires, right? And so, those are the type of things that you have to think about that are a little more nuanced. On the sending side of open enrollment, the appeal of Pittsfield School District case disabused both lawyers and citizens of the notion that it took two to do open enrollment, that only one district needs to declare open enrollment, and then all geographically surrounding districts will be obligated to pay 80% of their average per pupil cost, provided that they haven't adopted a limitation, right? And provided that that child is not exceeding the capacity set by the open enrollment school. In other words, that they've actually been admitted. So, continuing right along because time is of a premium. The court, basically, this is the outflow of the decision. There is no language in the open enrollment statute that could be construed as suggesting that a sending district, that's a district where kids are going out of the district to another school district under open enrollment, must adopt the statute to be subject to the statute. That was the decision. It's really interesting because I personally worked with clients over the past 20 years who looked at open enrollment, and all of them backed away from the edge, saying, "Oh, no, it looks like it won't work because the way we read the statute is that other districts have to adopt open enrollment as well for it to work." And who would do that, right? Well, the minute you declare that it can be done unilaterally, now you know who would do it, right? So, that broke, that decision breaks that logjam. Let's talk about funding. How does a district get paid when it opens up an open enrollment school? Well, it's locally funded first, as any other regular school. An open enrollment school really is funded budget-wise the exact same way. There's no tuition, you're not charging tuition for your resident kids, that hasn't changed at all, but you are charging a non-resident tuition, and it's variable. And so, you have to know what is 80% of the average pupil cost of each of those surrounding districts in order to know what you're going to be charging and what they're going to be paying. So, now that, the rest of the data on that MS-25 form for other districts is now relevant to you if you become an open enrollment school. I talked about the mandatory line item in the budget. There are some other funding-related provisions that you need to be aware of. Let's say hypothetically that you were in this room tonight as a special education director. Wait, we have one. And you're asking, "Okay, what is the impact of open enrollment on special education?" Open enrollment, because it was in the charter school statute, then taken out by the fact that nothing changed when that section was taken out. Open enrollment is like the charter school situation where if our child goes to an adjacent school under open enrollment, we're financially responsible for their special education services and the cost of those services. So, the best analogy would be to use would be, it is as if the family in your district has gone to a charter school. That is the impact of the statute at this point. So, the sending district is responsible for the decision-making process as well as the cost of special education. There's a statute for that. Let's talk a little bit quickly about admission and conduct standards. I alluded to it earlier. There is an admission process. So, the other thing you're going to have to do, let's say you declare CONVAL High School to be an open enrollment high school, there's going to have to now be an actual admission process. It's not as simple as I walk up, walk into the front office and say, "I'm here, let me in, I'm ready to go." No, there's an intake and admission process. So, you'll need to establish an admission process because upfront, you're going to need to know whether or not this individual, this family who's walking into your school, qualifies for your type of open enrollment program, number one. And if you set up particular focus areas, whether or not they've shown the interest in that area, whether they qualify for that area are all criteria under the statute. Now, if you have academic goals, it sounds a little bit like an oxymoronic statement for a public school, because I think we do have academic goals and certainly have guiding questions as well, but if you have academic goals, let's choose CONVAL High School, you have academic goals, then the board may decide, "We want to create a focused open enrollment program that is taking students through an admission process and admitting them either on the basis of aptitude, academic achievement, or need, provided your standard is related to your academic goals." You can't do it arbitrarily, arbitrarily. So, the other thing to look at as you think about open enrollment is, do we need to alter our academic goals in order to ensure that our open enrollment program is most effective and beneficial? A question. Conduct standards are the same. Full faith and credit. If I move from my home district and I've just been expelled for some misconduct attribute of my life, and I'm now sitting there at home, I can't just walk into another school district and say, "I was expelled from that district, but I'll be good here." No, the district can give full faith and credit to that expulsion. Transportation. Attendance at an open enrollment school is technically a reassignment to the student, but not for purposes of transportation. There is no obligation to transport a child from your district to an open enrollment school. Interestingly, would a district ever consider having a bus stop at a location near the periphery of that district to take kids in? Open question, right? In other words, there's no prohibition against it, but let's say I wanted to cannibalize another public high school, which is the retail term used when two stores are too close to each other and they begin to compete, right? I would probably malevolently locate a bus stop right near my boundary line so parents would find it easy to get to my school, right? And so, there are some things about this statute that each board will have to decide with their conscience and moral compass what they're prepared to do. I've talked earlier about special education services. I don't want to overlook the fact that as an open enrollment school, every open enrollment school already has a duty under Section 504 as a public school to accommodate children with disabilities. Nothing about a child coming from another district would change or diminish the duty that we would owe to accommodate that child who's under Section 504 for their general disabilities. You could not have a sign that said, "This ramp is only for CONVAL residents." We got rid of that idea in 1964. Moving right along. So, as I said earlier, the sending district is likely to be held responsible for special education costs. The State Board of Education has some regulations. If you adopt open enrollment, there's an interest and obligation on the part of the chair or the moderator to notify the Department of Education when you do it. And this is the information that I'll share with your chair or your moderator, probably your chair, that would have to be shared with the State Board of Education. Now, I've provided all of you with some written materials. In those written materials, it goes on to talk about a number of pending bills. So, this information is good for tonight. If you're out in the public listening to this presentation, it's being presented on December 3, right? So, if you're looking at this on December 4, check and see that the legislature has not done anything different with regard to open enrollment, because there are, as I said, two bills pending that would make all school districts open enrollment school districts. Just, it would do that. Now, I will tell you that one thing that fascinates me because, and maybe that's why I like practicing laws, I find it interesting, is I don't know whether or not the legislature has studied the ramifications of open enrollment. But the questions that I would ask as legislator is, what will it do to area agreements, longstanding agreements? What would it do to 20-year tuition agreements with open enrollment? I'd ask those questions. I would then ask, what will it do to funding? I don't believe there's any other state in the Union that has open enrollment that funds education locally the way we do. And the reason for that is that you probably can't sustain open enrollment and fund through local property taxes because it's no longer a situation where the taxpayer feels that their dollars are going to benefit their school. They're going to schools all over the state. And so, at the end of the process, typically, you will see that the ability to take the, "I won't change the tax pledge," gets eroded when you adopt open enrollment, and then the ability to maintain the way we fund in New Hampshire, probably, I predict, within five years, will change. Conclusions and recommendations. I really embedded my recommendations. You could do nothing. That's a time-honored recommendation, which I can't support, but you certainly could do nothing. You could and should engage in one half of the study, even if you said you were going to do nothing, which is determine what will be our outflow payment, what would we have to pay? We'd need to know that, and we'd need to predict as a board predicting a budget, what should that line item be? If other districts around us declare a school to be open enrollment, would we lose students, right? You know, right now, Francis Town is in our district, and if I were Francis Town, I would be asking the question, "Will we still be able to sustain a school if the other schools in the district become open enrollment? We withdraw, and then the CONVAL elementary schools become open enrollment schools." That's going to have a profound impact on their withdrawal plan. So, there are all kinds of things that need to be looked at, and I would say that for those schools that are desperate for numbers, so for example, Prospect-Mountain was in dire straits with their enrollment. They have declared two, three years ago that they're an open enrollment high school. Alton and Barnstead voted to do that, but it does have impact. So, for example, right now, Pittsfield, 11 of their students have left the high school. That high school is no longer necessarily economically viable, right? So, typically, what you would see in the case like Pittsfield is their discussions now are, "Do we need to close our high school and just simply go with the flow, right? Do open enrollment out of our district." For those school districts that don't have any high schools or any schools, this probably is going to work quite well for them, because the first year, they pay 80% of their average per pupil cost. The next year, they pay 80% of their average per pupil cost. The next year, they pay 80%. There could be a day, if they play their cards right, where it's free in their town to go to school, right? Fractionally free. I don't think so, because there will always be costs. You know, they'll be paying for special education costs, that'll be part of their average per pupil cost. So, that's only theoretical. So, that's the flyover on open enrollment. It's going to be very interesting to see. As a superintendent, I talk with my fellow superintendents, see if you can have a pact to be honest with each other. Is your district going to do something, right? Are you? Right now, there is no geographically approximate open enrollment school, so if all the superintendents aren't doing anything, then there isn't really a great reason to do it unless you believe you have a fiduciary duty to a school in your district that it would benefit from open enrollment, and you need to do it.
Sorry. You've used geographically approximate a couple of times. Does the statute only apply to schools that you're adjacent to, or you could skip over?
Absolutely not. You could have a father or a mother that owns a plane, and they fly you to Alton. There's an airport in Alton, right? They daily fly you to Alton, then you go to Prospect-Mountain High School. So, yes, your answer is correct. The only relevance to that statement, geographically approximate or adjacent, is that the majority, as we saw with the Pittsfield and Prospect-Mountain, the majority of the students are flowing from Pittsfield into Epsom, two geographically approximate towns. So, thanks for the question. Good point.
Great. So, I'm not the smartest person, however, if the entire state is deemed a open enrollment school, and as part of the open enrollment process, you can limit your outflow to quote-unquote "0%," if all the schools were to do that, that would tell me that there's no enrollment anywhere because you can't move. Am I missing something, or is... Am I missing something or is that the crux?
No, you're not, but I think what'll happen is the amendments, the statutes that do that, will also probably get rid of the limitations. Well, maybe they'll watch this tonight, otherwise they should.
You had mentioned that one potential problem could be that as you accept students from somewhere else, you might have to hire more teachers if you end up with more pupils than you can handle with your current staff. Wouldn't that be a trigger for an open enrollment school to cut off open enrollment?
That was really an illustration of what would happen if you didn't study your capacity. And so the point that I was seeking to make, perhaps not as clearly as I should have, was that you really want to study your capacity to avoid exactly that type of scenario. And the statute very much allows you to set your capacity. So the one thing I would absolutely advise a school district that's thinking of designating a school as open enrollment is say, "Okay, let's wear our numbers now. What can we absorb without hitting a tipping point where all of a sudden I just hired a whole new set of teachers for every subject area, right? Which would be self-defeating and candidly, not in the best interest of a district." So it requires that type of skillful assessment in order to set that. You wouldn't just simply say, "This building was built for 1,200 kids. We only have 800, so let's do 1,200," right? That's the kind of rationale that a person could easily fall into a real budgetary pitfall if they didn't consider true staffed capacity.
What happens when you have two laws that are in conflict with each other? Like for instance, you declare yourself an open enrollment school, you set a limitation and you have kids that go to another CTE and who want to stay there as a, which the law allows, but at the same time, you've set a limitation.
So when you have two laws that are in conflict, what a court would do is typically they would allow the more specific to govern the more general. So I believe what a court would most likely do is they would say the CTE is an exception to the general. Not sure about that, but that's a typical outcome if a court had to decide it.
On capacity, certainly we need to study it. But I could see a situation where you might say, "My capacity is X based upon the number of teachers that I have today, but under open enrollment, I get enough demand that I'm willing to hire another teacher to cover that and it's financially beneficial to me." How often can I adjust my capacity under this?
You can adjust it annually. You could go to the citizens each year to adjust your capacity, but it would require a vote of the citizens. So the other thing that I believe you could do, although the statute is not explicit about it, is it makes sense to me that if you were to have an article for open enrollment at one particular school and then an article for open enrollment at another school, that you would be setting different limitations on that inflow because obviously their capacity would differ. The capacity at AS differs from the capacity at Dublin, right? And so you would set, if both were to be open enrollment, you would be setting different limitations. So the other thing you would want to do is I believe you would need to have separate articles or at least a schedule of limitations that pertain to each open enrollment school.
If there are no other factual informations, then we will be moving into a non-meeting to get some advice from legal counsel as far as open enrollment for us. So at this point in time, I mean that we don't need to...
A non-meeting for the purpose of getting consultation with our legal counsel. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right.
So I don't know the technology, what's necessary. Are we not broadcasting at this juncture?
She's turning it off.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go down to reports. The Selectmen's Advisory Committee. At the last meeting of the Selectmen's Advisory Committee, we talked about some of the laws that are being looked at at the state level, and we talked a little bit about open enrollment at that point in time also. So, Policy Committee, Janine?
The Policy Committee met 11:24, 25. We reviewed and approved four policies for first read and one R procedure. It's on the, it's in the drive. The committee reviewed two sections of sealed minutes at the end of the meeting from 10:24, 2011, and the committee's recommendations will be brought forward in a non-public tonight for the board's approval. So the four policies are ACAC Title IX Prohibition of Sex Discrimination and Sex-Based Harassment Policy and Grievance Procedure. It's a small change. On page three, there was a part of a definition of what constitutes sexual harassment. It was removed to comply with the current DEI federal and state policies. Policy ACR II, Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity Employment Anti-Discrimination Plan is a simple update. It's just changed the identification and contact information for the new Title IX Coordinator and Civil Rights Coordinator, who is our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Amy Stevenson. Policy DIA Fund Balance has been updated and simplified to reflect some requested changes. The opening paragraph was simplified. The GASB initials, the definition of what those initials stand for was added in Paragraph Three. Wording in the sixth paragraph was changed for clarity. The paragraph identifying the RSA in the Warren article that had requested the ability to hold up the 5% was removed as it's no longer needed because it was passed. The Warren article was passed, and it is now history. And the former 2.5%, that was what was identified for reserve is increased to 5%, a possible 5%. The wording identifying the reasons for the use of the reserve funds was changed to simply unanticipated expenses from the current emergency description. Policy JCA Change of Class or School Assignment on the Basis of Best Interest or Manifest Educational Hardship is a little bit of a forerunner to what we heard tonight. So this reflects the spring 2025 legislative changes. It incorporates policy JEC and JCB. One, we had two separate policies for those two things, best interest and best interest and manifest educational hardship. If this policy is adopted, we will request that JCB rescinded because it is now included and reflects the legislative changes that happened in JCA. The legislative changes that happened this past spring reflect that under specified conditions and procedures that set forth in this policy, reassignment may be made to another public school, public academy, or approved private school within or without the district. So that change is accounted for in this new policy, so you're going to want to look at that. And then the last one was policy JICD Student Behavior Conduct Discipline and Due Process has incorporated policy JIA Student Due Process Rights and JIC Student Conduct. As directed by spring legislative change, the only changes CONVAL's policy includes the availability of IDEA compliant format in a verbal format for the code of conduct. So this is the first read. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact me or the superintendent.
So are we calling this the first read, or this is your report? Because you've got a first read down at the bottom.
I'm not going to do it again. Unless you want me to. Unless Jim would like me to go through that again. No.
Then I'll make my comments now.
Okay.
I think that moving DIA to 5% is a big mistake. Anything that makes it easier for us to withhold money from the taxpayers is a mistake. Between the 1.5% roughly part of our budget that we impose, that's kind of above what our anticipated spending is on any given year anyway, and what's in our trust funds, we're already sitting on almost $9 million of funds that can be used for unexpected expenses. There is no reason to increase from 2.5 to 5.
Okay, Jim, but we don't. Okay, Jim, just a second. So we, we, the policy, we made those changes based on the, what we were directed to from the Budget and Property Committee. We don't, we don't make those decisions ourself, so.
I never heard Budget and Property vote or say.
I said that I never heard Budget and Property tell the Policy Committee to change the 2.5 to 5. We acknowledge that it was 2.5, and that it would take a policy change to make it 5, but we never asked that to be done.
All right, Jim?
I was going to suggest that for Janine Comett or Jim Comett, that we take Policy DIA off of the automatic second read and tell Budget and Property the chance to formally review the changes they recommended. The process should be something as pertinent as Budget and Property is, that we should have been in the loop and reviewing it. So we were not formally in the loop and reviewing it. Some people might have been, number both committees, but I clearly was not. So I'd like to review it at our next Budget and Property meeting, which is two weeks from now. And then we'll get back to the Policy Committee. We can reschedule for a second read at a later point.
In fairness to the Policy Committee, I do vaguely remember us saying something to this effect, Jim and Jim, but my memory may be incorrect, but I do believe we did forward something to them, so I don't think they did this all on their own.
I didn't hear what you said. What was that?
I said, Jim, that I vaguely remember us having a conversation about moving this forward to the Policy Committee. So yes, I think it's fine to bring it back to the Budget and Property. That's perfectly reasonable, but I do vaguely remember having this conversation. It might have been at one of the meetings you missed, Jim, I'm not sure.
Curtis?
I'll add my support for keeping the percent where it currently stands at 2.5. I think it is sufficient, and only in a year when we have an extraordinarily large amount to return will we hit that. I think we're doing good. With the size of the budget and what that ends up being, that amount of, say, 1.25 million that fits within that is plenty sufficient.
Procedurely, the policy has brought it to us for first read. We usually do not vote on policies on first read. We let people have the opportunity to look things over in the policy and look at the changes. So I think what I'm going to say at this point in time is that it will be put on the agenda as a second read at the next board meeting. If we want to have more discussion at that point, that's fine, but at this point, we'll leave it at the regular procedure that we follow. Okay, Jim, Budget and Property report?
Three things of interest. One is the, first and foremost is the budget we discussed. You know, we, we presented the budget. We had some things, and we made some changes. We took some money out, and the net effect so far is we've, well, the pages just went dark. We added, at the first session, we added about 262,093. The last meeting, we talked about reducing the budget and the amount we included for healthcare premiums. That net increase, net decrease is 456, so the total difference now is something like $192,000 below we started. So the, in the next board meeting, we'll be voting on the budget, and the budget will be seen will, will have an operational budget increase of 1.42%, a district assessment increase of 9.07%. We'll share all the details along with the actual budget sheets that Neil puts out, along with the budget analysis sheet we put out, and we'll talk about it, formally vote on it the next time. And what the vote means is it's the vote, it's the budget will be presented at the public hearing in January. Budget can be modified after that meeting. Voted on after that meeting, then it goes into deliberative session. We voted on it again. Finally, vote will be in March, so. But the December 18 meeting will be to vote on the budget to present it at the budget hearing in January. So you'll see more details here in the next day or so, so you'll have plenty of time to look at all the numbers and ask questions. Those are the things we talked about, was the CPE. It's still not clear whether the state builder will not have money come January, so the smart thing for us to do is reserve us space in line. We talked today about using our architect who got involved in the last project, doing a little bit of homework and presenting something that we could use by January 1st, to reserve us space in line. We don't know at this point very clearly whether we need the public hearing to spend that money, so what we decided Budget and Property to do is go ahead and spend maybe $10,000, maybe hopefully less, something that would, that would be less, less expensive and less, less changes to building than we did last time. and less, less changes to building than we did last time to submit in January. And if we can, in fact, we do need to have another public hearing, have a public hearing maybe after the fact to move the money back from the trust fund to the budget. Final, final thing we talked about was the phone system. We recalled the last meeting, we talked about, the only thing we had to, had not talked about including the budget and that was the phone system. Mark Shaw presented four different options for us, two of which didn't seem to make any sense, but it's who we came to the conclusion that we could probably, we can definitely handle those with budget money in the first year of implementation. And there's two different, I'm not going to go through the different types of systems we're talking about, but it's smart we put it on an RFP next spring, which we all have a chance to review and go off the bids and bring it back to the board for approval, and we'll go from there. So those are the three items to talk about.
Yeah, so Jim, I think, just to clarify, I think it's, from the discussions with Mark, it was clear that we don't have to make any modifications to the 25-26 budget.
We can't make any, sorry, 25-26, I'm talking about 27 budget.
26-27 budget in order to accommodate the phone system, no matter which direction we go.
And I thought that was...
There aren't any budget impacts for the budget that's coming up. Yep.
Janine?
So I'm still, I guess, I'm still not clear, what happened to the justifications that were in, that were presented to us at our budget workshop?
They're all included, they're all included in the budget, Janine.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, Jim. And, and also, what happened to the returned lawyer fees? They just got rolled in?
That's included, that, no, that, we're going to return, return them all to the taxpayer. That's in the number, that's the number you'll see when we vote on the budget.
That will, that will be part of the discussion at the next...
This is a report in the meeting, this is going to, this is going to vote on the budget item right now, this agenda.
Okay, but I just, I still have the questions. Okay, so it's still going to be, all right, thanks.
Those are the recommendations from the Budget and Property meeting.
And still going to be...
Right, yep. All right, is that it, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Liam and Marcus.
So plenty of things have been happening around ConVale. All the, all the winter sports are now up and going. Basketball and indoor track and field started last week. Swimming has its first meet at Nashua this Saturday, so I'll be there.
And I think next Saturday, Indoor Track and Field has their first meet. And then also, after that, I think it is mentioned later in our agenda, but, actually, it's not, sorry, we have the winter concert, concert on Wednesday, the 17th, at 6:30. And then also, the next day, we have, on the 18th, we are being, we're going to have a school assembly for the in-school concert. It's Wednesday, the 17th.
That is the in-school concert for the high schoolers. The one open to, to the public will be, oh wait, sorry, that is, that is the 17th, at 6:30. Sorry, that is the one open to the public. My bad. I'm used to it to be being on Tuesdays, so. Tomorrow, the National Honor Society is having a full-day retreat in the gym, not gym, sorry, that would be weird, the library, where we will be, you know, discussing a lot with the new members, the returning members, you know, what it looks like to be a leader in the community, future goals and plans. We're going to be splitting up into committees in order to get certain tasks done. Last year, the beautification of ConVale Committee managed to get a mural done inside ConVale, so that's just an example of some things we'll be doing. Last weekend, we had the craft fair at the ConVale Gym. I saw a couple of you guys there. We had a great turnout. There was a lot of people, the vendor, there were a lot of vendors, the vendors were really happy, and it was just all around a great time, so thank you for that.
We also have a upcoming Job Corps field trip, which is, Job Corps is basically just a job training and education kind of thing within our school, and we have that field trip coming up.
Next week, on, next Monday, we are having the ASVAB test. ASVAB is Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. Beyond being a mouthful, it is also a test determining, you know, a student's capabilities and skills for the US military, what sort of careers they'll be able to go and get if they enter into the military.
Past that, we have a upcoming play rehearsal on Friday for the play. I think it's later down in the year. And then we also have for world languages, so I think this is German and Spanish. I'm in German, and I will be doing it, but the poetry recitation, which basically students in the world languages classes have chosen pieces to, or poems to rehearse and practice for, and then they will be reciting it in front of judges, and they will be given placements, and the top three students from each class will get to recite them in the library in front of a group of students and stuff.
And then finally, a little bit of an update from the American Exchange Program from a while ago. Next Wednesday, we are having a, the teachers running that are having a meeting in the LHT at ConVale for the parents of the about 20 students who are interested in it. So we'll be able to learn more about that there, what it looks like, and, you know, what's going to happen with all that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. A second, Kat.
Any questions about the consent agenda? Okay. We now need to vote on the consent agenda, and again, because we have a person who is not present, we have to do roll call vote, so. Brenda, you want to?
Sure. In non-public here, so Greg, Kat, Janine, Curtis.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jim Fredericksen.
Yes.
Tom Burgess.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Bill Gurney.
Okay, passes. Superintendent's report?
Okay, monthly events for December. This Thursday, we have Facilities Committee at 6:00 PM, followed by Communications Committee. Anything else for this week? Next week, on Monday, the 8th, we have a policy committee at 6:00 PM. And there is nothing else scheduled for that week. All right, the third week of December, we have an Education Committee meeting at 6:00 PM on Monday, the 15th. We have a Budget and Property Committee meeting on Tuesday, the 16th, followed by a School Board meeting. On Thursday, the 18th, we have Selectmen's Advisory Committee at 6:00 PM. That week's pretty full, but anything? That was, I'm on the third week of December.
I'll just, just to notify, I'm not trying to schedule a meeting. The State Board hearing for the Francis Town and Temple withdrawal will be on the 11th, allegedly. Okay. Just putting that out there.
Alleged, it will be on the 11th, right?
It will, I mean, I haven't seen their agenda yet, so that was just the last notice.
It will be on the 11th, whether we get through it or not, is, we had to reschedule it after the last time, so.
Okay. So I've mentioned all the things in December that are on the calendar. Anything else to add before we go on to January? All right, in January, one of the things we'd like to do is schedule the meeting for the budget hearing, which needs to happen before January 20th, correct?
That is correct, that has to happen on or before the 3rd Tuesday in January, which is the 20th.
The 20th, so I'd love to get that on the calendar first before we start adding other things.
So what do you think about the 6th?
What happens if it's, what happens if it's starting on the 20th?
No, on the 6th.
That was going to be my next question.
And then we assign a snow date for the public hearing also, so.
The 6th, the public hearing, that's the 20th.
That is correct, it has to take place before the 20th.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I thought, I thought somebody suggested 20th for the meeting. Thank you.
Yep. It'll be on the 6th before the board meeting, public hearing. Yep.
So it'll be at 7 with the board meeting immediately following?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, we have snow, want to do the snow day on the 13th, the following Tuesday? Can I have a thumbs up if that's, okay?
So also on this January 6th, we've got Budget and Property at 5:30, followed by the, well, now, public hearing for the budget, and then followed by the School Board meeting. Anything else for the first week in January? Currently, there's nothing scheduled for the second week in January? Oh, the snow date for the, all right. During the third week of January, the Education Committee is scheduled to meet Monday, the 19th, at 6:00 PM. And on Tuesday, the 20th, we have Budget and Property, followed by the School Board meeting.
I don't know that we need two Budget and Property meetings after we get the budget through the public hearing. Go back to one a month. 9, 10, 19th will be the one day.
So which one do you want to cancel, the 20th?
Martin Luther King, King Day is 19th.
Oh, yep.
One day.
When is policy meeting? Are we meeting on Mondays or Tuesdays?
I know, I thought we were Monday, Tuesday, now that Kat's available, did that include you, Bill, Carl? Six.
No, it'll be the 27th, it's the 4th. So Ed Committee could either move to the, potentially move to the 12th or the 26th.
Facilities is going to be doing daytime tours of the middle schools and the high school and the CTE, so that's still to be arranged. So in lieu of that, we won't be scheduling any meetings at this time.
So, okay, thanks, Tom. We'll look to do a communications meeting. How does Thursday, January 8th work for everybody? This will be a, start to be a busy time for us as we look forward to a forum.
You can do the same, please.
I hadn't yet, 6 o'clock work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, and we can assess needs at our next meeting on Thursday, too?
So Education Committee cannot happen on the 19th because that's Martin Luther King Jr. Day. You can be educated, but the district is closed, so. If you wanted to stay with Monday, you could either move it up a week or back a week, or later in that week.
I'm flexible, I have orders here, board members.
In your packet, you've got the December 1st enrollment figures, board requests. I believe I responded to the outstanding board request today and through email around CTE enrollment disaggregated by ConVale students versus students from other districts, out of district, or students from other districts that are tuitioning in. There was one other, oh, information about EFAs. Nope. So if there's no questions about that, I'm going to, Neil, are we doing the PowerPoint for?
Do you have it?
Yes, I can.
So Jim has already mentioned about the phone system, so again, just to clarify that, Mark is looking at a couple of different options that he presented to Budget and Property, and what we're looking at is not having anything for the phone system addition for that justification. Instead, if, it will be, we'll be looking at the, putting it in in the future after an RFP is put out for four different possibilities that Mark has looked into.
So in...
Jim?
In 26-27, there are two options, one of which is easily covered by what's in the Technology Trust Fund, and the other of which would be not, you wouldn't see anything until the 27-28 budget that would have to be manipulated, so we're out years.
Yes.
So what, what is covered by, what is it that you're putting, for the trust fund?
The trust fund would be the, would cover the one-time installation and purchase of the technology equipment, which is...
That would be necessary for a void method system? Or is that for...
For one option, for one methodology of doing it, yes.
Well, is that...
Which, whichever it is, there's a couple of different options.
So whichever it is, you need to have that, the purchase, that purchase made?
Right.
No, in one case, it is not a purchase of equipment, and we would not need to tap the trust fund for that.
But we're going to make our mind up before we proceed.
Yes, after the RFP, after the hour... Yes, after the RFP, after the RFP goes out.
There are a couple of options, and, and, um, one of those would require a sufficient amount of upfront dollars to purchase the equipment, I think it's about $80,000, that it would need to come out, it should come out of the trust fund, and it's appropriate for that, because it's a one-time purchase of technology equipment. The other is a, requires a larger amount year in, year in, year out in our budget, so it would be a budgeted amount, but that budget wouldn't hit until the 27, 28 timeframe, so.
And Mark will get RFPs out for those options, come back, he'll go to Budget and Property for recommendation, and then come to the School Board for a vote.
And the RFP would happen in the spring.
Yep. Neil?
So, we wanted to do just sort of an update presentation, partly because it wasn't broadcast before, but just to give a sense, next meeting is the vote on the budget. Budget and Property will make some recommendations, and at the end, we have some things that are ready, we'll have to, decisions that we'll have to make. So the proposed budget at this point is $60,717,784. This is an 844,337 increase, or a 1.41%. It's worth noting that the Warren article for the CBA increase last year that was voted was 806,000 estimated for this year, so it's really within 30,000 of, of what voters were expecting last year, so a lot of hard work went into this. As you can see, salaries are 49% and budget are 26.4%, which is over 75%, so that's the largest part of our, of the budget. So, a little more detail, the total increase for salaries is 971,000, that almost 972, which is 3.39. This is the implementation of year two of the contract, and it was estimated at 806,379. The increase includes all staff, not just those covered by the CVA, CBA, and it includes the positions you voted as part of the justification, including the elementary school technology integrator. Benefits are 3.29% decrease, it's nice to be able to say that. The average increase in other benefits are offset by a decrease in health insurance. Overall, our health insurance increase, what, what we're charged per plan is up 3.4%. We saved about $100,000 with the addition of the higher deductible plan when people chose to do that. Staff changes are included, changes in plans are included in here, and at this point, we have, we'll talk a little bit more about this next meeting, but we have budgeted for single plans for the open positions, and the recommendation from Budget and Finances that we then have the trust fund, the health insurance trust fund to, to back up if we, if we need to supplement that. Purchase services, I guess we're still backward, is up 6.31%, a decrease in the legal line of 75,000. People's services, special ed drives this increase, and it also includes our custodial contracts. Property services, almost the entire increase here is the increase requested by Budget and Property to start doing some of the capital projects, so the Hancock Greenfield boilers are included in the budget as well as the PES roof. I believe that's about $683,000. Other services, there's a 7.88% decrease. Largely, this is a special ed decrease, which has a substantial decrease in tuition and general education tuition decrease. It includes the estimated numbers for the new bus contract. Supplies and materials are 1.76 decrease, and this is really utility savings. Property is a 3.28% decrease. This is driven by the need to purchase less technology, Chromebooks largely. And there's a 3.1% other increase, a slight increase in dues and fees. So the proposed operating budget is a total increase of 1.74%. This sort of outlines by category the changes that you can see in one chart. So the open budget item, I think the phone system actually probably isn't no longer open. The funding of the trust funds will be proposed next time. Those are funded jet, from fund balance, so it doesn't really change the bottom line. Fund balance use, what you want to project could be used to offset taxes, as well as the use of the returned attorney's fees are still outstanding items. And then the district assessment can be determined when these items are finalized. One thing, probably the hardest part about sort of looking at this is because such a large amount was returned to taxpayers this year, you're trying to, to keep a relatively level tax rate, and there won't be that same amount to be returned, so that's why there's, there'll be some work that needs to be done just to look at that. So most of the increases will be because of that change, because there was a drop this year. But I think that's it.
Any questions for Neil at this point? Okay. Thank you very much.
I guess the other one issue was the critical stipends, so we don't miss that. Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, we wanted to bring to the board the thought of adding some critical shortage stipends, which is something that's in the collective bargaining agreement. And talking with administration, we've identified two positions that we feel could really benefit from adding this. One is the engineering teacher at the high school. That position has now been not filled, this is the second year. That's a program that we'd really like to see back at ConVau, and so we have the ability to establish a critical shortage stipend of 3,000 to 5,000, so our recommendation would be the full 5,000, because anyone that has the ability to teach engineering could be doing engineering in the public sector for a lot more money. So 5,000, we'll get to matching that, but it's...
So Ann, I know that if you established a critical shortage for a math teacher, you have to pay all the math teachers that critical shortage stipend. Is there an equivalent to this engineering teacher that you would have to pay others?
One.
Great. Thank you.
Oops. Other questions?
Yes. Was that one other, or?
No, just, there'll be one, there's one engineering teacher. No. That's the first one.
Are there potential options for working the engineering program back into the offerings to students in, if we can't hire a teacher? If this is a more persistent, if the $5,000 doesn't do it, are there other steps we could take to integrate some of that programming back into current CTE?
Potentially, but that would require curriculum work.
Okay. The second one?
Uh, the second one is, we would like to offer a critical shortage stipend for special educators who have an emotional, is it, and, so emotional behavioral, say it again? Disorder. Certification specifically. So these are teachers that would be working in our ESP programs. So at most, we're talking three, three teachers. So to get the critical shortage, you would have to have this certification specifically, and you would have to be teaching in the ESP program. So it would not apply to all special educators. Uh, I, we're recommending 5,000 for that also. This is a program that keeps us from having to place students out of district, and so getting...
Curtis?
Oh, four, it's four teachers, I apologize.
Thanks. That was the question.
Okay. I think we, we need to take those two positions separately, so can I have a motion to accept the stipend for the technology teacher?
I make that motion. For the engineering.
Engineering, sorry.
I second that motion.
Okay. Can you read the roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Janine?
Curtis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim Fredrickson?
Yes.
Jim Kingston? Tom Burgess?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to add the stipend for the special ed positions?
I move we approve the critical shortage stipends for the four special education positions.
Greg?
Yes.
Kat?
Yes.
Janine? Curtis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim Fredrickson?
Yes.
Jim Kingston? Tom Burgess?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
And Dale.
Yes.
Okay. Um, updated CTE agreement.
So I put this on a slide because I knew this meeting was gonna be long, and I didn't wanna forget anything. So I have shared with you an amended CTE agree, regional agreement. So we have an agreement that involves ConVau, Conant, and Messina for our CTE programming. We established, we signed, the chair last year signed the agreement. There was a change in the last legislative session, and it required updating. So the update specifically, and when you look at it, there are red line, it's redlined, so you can see the exact changes that are, that are being made, but they focus very much on the obligation for regional centers to develop what is referred to as a CTE access program by January 1st, 2026. And the intent is to allow students from sending districts to enroll part-time or full-time in non-CTE courses in the receiving district. So Dean was talking about that earlier. So that is really the focus of the changes.
Yeah, so, um, I read it, and I have a modification that needs to be done under Section 5 CTE access program, under number five under that, A. For part-time, the way it reads right now is for part-time program students, the sending district shall pay to the receiving district an amount equal to not less than 80% of the sending, sending district's average cost per pupil as determined by the Department of Education, using the most recent available data as reported by the district to the department. And then it says divided by five times the number of credits that the part-time program student is enrolled in. So the more credits that this part-time student is in, the less they pay, as that's written right now. Should be divided by times, divided by five, then multiplied by the number of credits that the part-time student is enrolled in. The way it reads right now, it's dividing by five times the number of credits that the student is enrolled in, so.
Okay. Thank you. Wrapping my head around that right now, but yes, we will look at that, though. Thank you. Yes, if you notice anything, 'cause we're, at the December 18th, I would like to be in a place where the chair can sign this agreement. Um, the other piece that I wanted to point out is, there is, there, the section on seat apportionment. To date, when you look at it, this, this is the section, and it's the first sent, the only thing that's been done is the first sentence, that students from sending districts shall have access to CTE programming on a basis consistent with resident district pupils. So some people are interpreting that as, 'cause we've typically had 75% of the seats are, if it's a ConVau CTE course, 75% go to ConVau students, 25% are held for students from Conant and Messina. So some people are interpreting this as it will have to be equal across all districts, but legal has said that is not clear in the definition. Their recommendation is to leave the 75 and 25 in for now, knowing that we may get further clarification, but the way it's currently written, it could just be that the process that we apply is the same and equal process for everyone, rather than actual seat apportionment. So, so that, there could be further, I'm just kinda giving you a heads up, there could be a further change to that, but. Not included, but I thought was important is, in the RSA, there's also an amended part that if you have a student who's in a non-public school or a chartered public school, and they want to attend the CTE that's close to that school, and it may not be their resident school, it's in the law that the DOE is authorized to pay tuition for those students. Does that make sense? So it, it's obviously not gonna be in our regional agreement, but that, that is a piece.
Okay.
That was the only other kind of piece that I wanted to point out. So again, we'd love to get this signed at our next meeting, so if you notice anything else, please let me know, and we'll... So thank you for the catch, Mr. Kingston.
All right. Thank you. Visit to the State Department of Education. Curtis and I belong to a group of school board chairman and vice chairman around the state, and we've been meeting online to talk about what concerns each of the school boards has throughout the state, and we've been able to set up a meeting with the new chairman of the Education Department. And so that's gonna be on the 12th, and so Curtis will be going on the 12th to represent us in meeting with the new Director of Education. And so that is something that we wanted everyone to know. Any questions on that? Any questions on that? So, no, the other one's going to be keen. So, again, a lot of the similar concerns that we voiced here are being voiced, obviously, by other school boards around the state. And so this is our opportunity, we tried to get a, an appointment with the governor, which we weren't able to do. But at this point in time, we're meeting with the new board of, you know, commissioner of education, sorry. Curtis?
Thanks, and thanks for your tacit blessing to go and represent our district in meeting with Commissioner Davis. I think it's going to be very interesting to report back on. I think we're going, and as the group has spoken so far, we're going with the intentions of making ourselves known and available to the Department of Education, that we are resources to be called upon, that we, as local representatives, have a great deal of knowledge about how the things they implement play out. So being a new commissioner, we feel it's a good opportunity to start a relationship. So that's first and foremost the, the reason for our going. Aside from that, the topics that have been proposed so far cover special education costs and their ever increasing impact on our budget. We plan to talk about open enrollment broadly, as well as what local control will mean to us, or means to us. In ways we think that that is being impacted or could be impacted. And we'll do some listening too, so after that meeting, probably at our next board meeting, I'll have an update.
Thank you. All right, Janine's already gone through policy.
Yes, and it sounds like everything will stay on first read, but there will be a discussion around DIA at the next meeting, at our next meeting.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the gift donation?
Move to accept the gift from Kenny Williams, an amount of $700 for purpose of new wrestling singles, with gratitude.
All right.
Yes, with gratitude to Mr. Williams, thank you.
Yes. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the request for a field trip?
I move that we allow the ConVau High School Concert Choir and Band to travel to Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida from 22 April to 27 April 2027? Is that is 2027? To perform, attend workshops, clinics, and music professionals, and spend time in the parks.
Second, Janine.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All right, go ahead, Miranda.
Greg? Cat? Janine? Curtis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
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 Tom?
Yes.
Carl? And Bill? Thank you.
All right, this point in time, we have need for a non-public, so. Once we get rid of. Oh, there's no public, so. This is what happens to Greg when it gets late at night. Um, I don't, I think.
I second.
...